Good evening, colleagues. Welcome to the meeting of the Borough Council, the first of 2023. Please be seated. Just to make everybody aware, this evening's meeting has been recorded and livestreamed. Welcome to those members of the public sitting in the public gallery and all those people watching from home. If any member of the public or press would like to record the proceedings themselves, please ensure that this is done from the public gallery without interfering with the business of today's meeting. If the fire alarm should sound, can those sitting in the public gallery leave through the doors behind them? And those sitting on the chamber floor leave through the doors behind me? We should all gather at the front of the town hall and staff will assist with this. To limit disturbances, please ensure that mobile phones and other electronic devices are on silent during the meeting and that we have no interruptions or disruptions from the chamber floor or the public gallery that make conducting this meeting of business impossible. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones available. Please remember to switch the microphones on when speaking and elevate them so your voice can be heard and also to switch them off when you're not speaking. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by raising their hand and being invited to speak. All other councillors must remain silent while another member is speaking. Members are reminded that the Code of Conduct applies to this meeting and we should always demonstrate respectful and courteous behaviour. We must all promote the practice of decent and civilised behaviour at meetings of the Borough Council. Full council today will only deal with business as set out on the summons. If any item does not appear to be contentious, members will be asked whether any member disagrees or wishes to abstain. Only if there is a dissenting voice will a vote be taken. I have received apologies from the following councillors: Amar, Potts, Stonehouse, Heatherington, Strike, Duncan and Foreman. Are there any other apologies? Yes, councillor Francis?
Yeah, councillor Bristow and councillor Galloway.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Did we get that? Yeah. Anyone else? Yes, councillor Kennedy.
Councillor Milburn.
Thank you. Yes, councillor Thompson. Any other apologies? No. We move on to the next item of business, which is declarations of interest. If a member has any disclosureable pecuniary interest in any item which prevents them from participating in the debate or any vote, they will need to leave the chamber during that item. I have had declarations of interest from the following councillors: councillor Carter, councillor Awalsh and councillor Barclay. They have declared personal declarations in respect of motions won and I understand that all WASP women are not prevented from participating or taking part in any discussions in this evening's meeting. Does any other member wish to make any declarations before we move on to the next item of business? Councillor Kilgair?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I wish to declare a personal interest in motion one as I am employed by the Department of Work and Pensions. This does not prevent me from taking part in any discussion about the matter or in any vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kilgair. Councillor Best?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to declare a personal interest in motion one. That's by virtue of the fact that I work for the Member of Parliament for South Shields, who's a founder member of the APPG mentioned in the motion, and I've also been able to support that work since 2016. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Best. Councillor Welsh?
Yes, I'd like to declare an interest in item six as I'm in the Animal Protection Working Group.
Thank you, councillor Welsh. Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Chair. I wish to declare a personal interest in motion one as I'm a WASP woman. This does not prevent me from taking part in any discussion about the matter or in any vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Robertson?
Thank you. Madam Mayor, I haven't got a declaration of interest, but one of the declarations there, surely it's a pecuniary interest and that is totally different. You know, when you're an employee involved in this, as an employer with these pensions, that is a pecuniary interest.
Just one moment, councillor Robertson. I'll take legal advice on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've been advised, councillor Robertson, that councillor Kilgair can take part. She's been advised privately about that and there's nothing to stop her. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, councillor Bell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Firstly, I'd like to declare an interest, non-pecuniary, in item four, the Treasury Management Midyear Review, as the local authority representative on the board of Oldham School, who are named in paragraph thirty-eight of this report, and also, as others have done, a non-pecuniary interest in motion one as someone with a personal interest in the WASP campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Councillor Atkinson?
Thank you. I would to declare a personal interest in motion one, the WASP motion. It doesn't prevent me from taking part in any discussion on the matter or vote on it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Atkinson. Councillor Lamont?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can I declare a non-pecuniary interest in item six? I'm a member of the working group. My rights are there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Peacock?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to declare an interest in motion one as I'm a WASP woman as well.
Thank you, councillor Peacock. Is that all of the declarations of interest? Do you wish to make a declaration of interest, councillor Robertson? I'll allow you to speak, but it's under declarations of interest.
Just going back to what I've just said, the Monton Officer can it overrule section thirty-four of the Localism Act?
I'm sorry, councillor Robertson, this is not up for discussion. This is not through the monitoring officer. I do believe councillor Kilgair has taken advice from her employers.
I'm quoting the law, section thirty-four of the Localism Act.
Right. I'm going to allow the monitoring officer to reply to you, councillor Robertson.
This isn't a matter that concerns only the member who is seeking to declare an interest, but you can be assured that that member has taken advice and because of the nature of the motion, it is a personal interest. And I don't think there's anything else that needs to be said at the meeting today. It is about the personal responsibility of a member to make a declaration.
Thank you, Miss Robertson. We now move on to item two on this evening's agenda, which is the minutes of the council meeting dated the twenty-fourth of November, 2022. Are they accepted as a correct record? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you. First of all, I've had a number of residents that's been in the public gallery and had the papers in previous meetings, including, it's getting repeated tonight, if you can assist us by having a look at this page of the agenda on the front here, the way it's laid out, I know everything's listed in agenda number in the booklet, right? But as an example, if you go to item eleven on the second page, it will say, in accordance with the council procedure, rule ten, to consider the following notice of motion, motion one, and then you turn the page again, and motion two. Now, what people are saying is they're getting lost in the booklet when they're trying to follow the meeting. Now, if I can finish, right? So, that's at the very end. Now, people are like, where are we in this booklet? Because if you go back to the front again, the items are listed one to eleven, but there's no page numbers there where people are like, well, you know, people are getting lost at every meeting. So for the sake of each of them having page numbers on, a person can follow it. But they're not following it and I know councillors are not following it at times. For the sake of page numbers being there, nobody can get lost.
Thank you for that, councillor Robertson. It will be noted that this is just for correction. Sorry, this is just to move the correct minutes. Are those agreed?
What happens about the residents?
I'm s- It's not part of the minutes, councillor Robertson, I'm being advised. But we have noted what you've said and that will be taken into consideration. Okay? We now move on to item three on this evening's agenda, which is the Mayor's announcements and communications. Colleagues, the coronation of His Majesty King Charles III will be held on Saturday, the sixth of May, twenty twenty-three, at Westminster Abbey in London. This historic event is the first to take place in nearly seventy years, following the late Queen's long reign, and marks the formal investiture of a monarch, monarch's regal power. To celebrate the coronation, it's been confirmed that an extra bank holiday will take place on Monday, the eighth of May, two days after the official ceremony. The Prime Minister, Rishi Sunak, said it would allow people to come together to celebrate. The council is currently considering what can be done to support the community's activities and events across the borough so we can come together to celebrate the coronation of His Majesty the King. Further details to help residents to commemorate this will be available shortly. Thank you. We now move on to item four on this evening's agenda. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director and Business of Resources on the Treasury Management Midyear Review. I will ask councillor Joanne Bell, Lead Member for Governance, Finance and Corporate Affairs, to formally move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Chartered Institute of Public Finance and Accountancy Code of Practice on Treasury Management requires council to receive a mid-year report on treasury management. This report covers the period from the first of April, twenty twenty-two, to the thirtieth of September, twenty twenty-two. The key concern with the economy at the moment is still inflation, which has increased dramatically during twenty twenty-two and is significantly above the Bank of England target. In this environment, interest rates have risen during the period and are expected to increase further in twenty twenty-three. During the period, no new borrowings were arranged through the Public Works Loan Board and no repayments were made. The report notes that the activity during the period was controlled within the Treasury and prudential limits are set out in the Treasury Management Strategy and the activity is being delivered within the budget expectations. Council are asked to note the report, which is for information purposes only. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is that seconded?
Seconded, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kilgair. Just one second, councillor Robertson, I would just finish this article. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Yes, councillor Robertson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It says no options have been submitted for consideration as this report is for information only. How can such a serious financial report come to full council for information only? We are supposed to discuss the contents of it, surely to God?
It's just to be noted, it's just to give information to full council, am I correct, councillor Bell?
It is, Madam Mayor. This is just an actual note report. The actual treasury management activity is brought regularly to council and that is when we do the debates. This is just for note, as we have to, through the SIPF Code of Practice twice a year, just for information purposes only.
Thank you, councillor Bell.
Thank you.
Councillor Robertson?
In normal times, I would have accepted that and let that go. But as we all know, the accounts haven't been signed off yet. They haven't gone to Audit Committee yet. They haven't gone to General Purposes Committee yet. So, we're heading at six, nine months with no updates and nothing solid other than unordered accounts. So, when are the accounts going to the Audit Committee? When are they going to the General Purposes Committee? Thank you.
Councillor Bell, would you like to come back to that?
Madam Mayor, obviously, we are still waiting for the auditors' accounts. They're outside our control, they are independent auditors and we are waiting for them coming through. As soon as they are, they will be taken back to the Audit Committee and obviously will then come back to council. This report, in its state now, has been reported to council every six months. It's no different from the reports we've brought before.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Just one moment, is somebody else?
Come on, please.
Excuse me, councillor Robertson, there was somebody else wanting to speak. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, councillor Bell, for your report. This report shows an actual debt level as of September, including PFI's, seven hundred and thirty-eight point six million, with a current forecast for debt repayments for our council of twenty-one point eight million pounds a year. Staggering level of debt with an equally staggering and debilitating yearly payment of twenty-one point eight million pounds for all our residents to endure for decades to come. With this in mind, can I ask councillor Bell, the findings of the SIPF review in June last year highlighted several financial concerns and recommendations were made, including, and I'll directly quote SIPF, that such levels of increase in borrowing cannot continue. Can I ask councillor Bell for an assurance that this recommendation is being or will be acted on?
Thank you, councillor Bell.
Chair, obviously, this is not the SIPF review and I have stood here many times and said that it is the remit of the Audit Committee and that is where the review is. However, during my speech earlier, I did say that during the period, no new borrowings were arranged through the Public Works Loan Board and no repayments were made. So, no further borrowings have taken place and obviously with the interest rates as high as they are, I very much doubt that that will be the case going forward, that we will not be borrowing.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is there- I'm sorry, I've got one more person. Councillor Herbert?
Thank you. Thank you for the report, councillor Bell. The report says the council lends money to banks and foreign institutions. It mentions checks being done on financial security, but there are no checks done about sustainability and possible investments in fossil fuels. A recent report has shown that thirty-three of the top sixty world banks have increased their investments in fossil fuels by as much as two hundred percent. If we want to avoid climate change disaster, the exact opposite needs to be happening. As the council has ambitions to achieve zero carbon by twenty thirty, I think the council's money should only be invested in ways that help to achieve this target and this should be considered in future. Or even better, consider using the money to invest in local renewable energy projects that will provide local employment, put money into local economy and reduce the carbon footprint of South Tyneside.
Thank you, councillor Herbert. Councillor Bell, did you want to come back to that?
No, just to say that the councillor's comments are noted and it is something that we do take on board, which we have done regularly through the Pension Fund and our Treasury Management.
Thank you. Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you know, going back to what I said about the accounts haven't been signed off, they haven't been to the Audit Committee, they haven't been to the General Purposes Committee and as we've all seen in the last few weeks, there's been announcement in the local press that there's a five million shortfall. So, again, we're going to move on another three, six, nine months with this shortfall that's only getting deeper. And where councillor Bell's been saying that there's no Public Works Loan Board loans, she's also slotting in that there's been no repayments either. So, we're not better in the situation in any shape or form, but we're not discussing it. And we're now in January, the next meeting's going to be in the February, the elections prior to May. We're nine months into the mayor, as usual.
Councillor Robertson, I think councillor Bell did explain, this is an interim report just to be noted. The full report will be coming to full council when all of the issues that you have raised here tonight will be addressed. I'm sorry, that is the-
We're twelve months behind. The finance of this council are twelve months behind. Thank you.
Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just two very brief points, really. First of all, in paragraph thirty-eight, it talks about private finance initiative contracts. It talks about the financial liabilities and the burden of those PFI contracts. In previous years, I might have questioned the wisdom of the South Shields School PFI, given the relatively short lifespan of that school. But I'm pleased that that site has now been repurposed and the borough is therefore getting a benefit from that ongoing cost. But just to link that paragraph through to paragraph fifty-one, which is about the environmental and sustainability implications, given that the waste facility mentioned in paragraph thirty-eight, which has a PFI contract on it, given that that's an energy from waste plant or also known as an incinerator. Incinerators are an expensive way of generating energy and handling waste, whilst also creating a significant economic burden for the places that use them. With regard to the environmental and sustainability implications, burning waste is far from climate neutral. Incinerators actually emit more CO2 than coal-fired, natural gas-fired or even oil-fired power plants. I would therefore argue that there are environmental and sustainability implications from those investments and I think we need to be acknowledging those sorts of issues more comprehensively in reports to Borough Council going forward.
Thank you, councillor Francis. Councillor Bell, did you want to come back to that?
Chair, I'm afraid it isn't my area of expertise as the Treasury Management is, but I'm sure that colleagues will be taking that on board, which we have done previously and will continue to move forward, taking that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. So, is the report noted, colleagues? Thank you. We now move on to item five on this evening's agenda. It's to consider a report on the council tax support scheme. I will ask councillor Bell to formally move the report. Councillor Bell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report considers the local council tax support scheme for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Since twenty thirteen, the National Council Tax Benefit Scheme has been replaced with a support scheme determined locally by each council. The scheme is intended to support those on lower incomes by reducing the level of council tax due. In introducing the scheme, linked government funding was immediately cut and was further reduced for many years thereafter. The council is proposing minor revisions to its existing support scheme to maintain consistencies with some changes to national welfare benefits. Residents with disabilities and those with young children will still retain more protection under the scheme. The scheme has been designed to remain affordable within the resources available, given the potential for increases in claimant numbers, which is a financial risk which will fall upon the council. The proposed budget for twenty twenty-three, twenty-four also includes a further one hundred pound relief for those in receipt of council tax support who are of working age. This will benefit almost twelve thousand of our residents. The attached council tax reduction scheme is recommended for adoption by the council. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bell. Is that seconded?
Seconded, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Ellison. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Sorry, councillor Herbert, I didn't see you there.
As you see, councillor Bell, in twenty thirty, the government handed over the administration of the scheme to councils, along with attempts and cut in the grant that was coming from the government. The then council leader at that time said this would have a serious detrimental impact on some of the most vulnerable in our society and this is grossly unfair and would result in greater hardship to our citizens affected. South Tyneside council had an option to absorb the cut or charge in a range between zero and thirty percent of the normal council tax. Despite the warnings of the council leader, they chose a maximum of thirty percent. Only one of nine councils in the UK to do so, many including Durham, made no charge whatsoever. This has had a devastating effect on the household budgets of the poorest and when they know about the pay, they are taken to court where further extra court summons fees are charged, driving people further into debt. The council has taken hundreds of people to court and even now, even then stands bare of sin if they can't pay the fines. The Children's Society say that around three thousand five hundred children in South Tyneside are affected by this. Children from poor backgrounds lag at all stages of education and have a higher risk of both illness and premature death. This is not an effect on our schools and our health services. This has been made worse by the cost of living crisis that we've recently had and the energy crisis and the high energy prices. So, I call on the council to carry out an impact assessment and benefit analysis to see that the relatively small amounts raised by this minimum council tax is an overall benefit for the people of South Tyneside. I think this should be considered in the Tyneside Health and Wellbeing Strategy and Draft Action Plans as outlined in the report by the Director of Public Health on the Joint South Tyneside Health and Wellbeing Strategy. The strategy plan considered at our last council meeting outlines how the council intends to tackle the biggest health and wellbeing challenges facing the borough. Some key outcomes which are in this focus of the strategy include giving every child and young person the best start, financial security to lead healthy, fulfilling lives and for good mental wellbeing. Surely this support scheme should be considered as part of the strategy. It would also fit with the council's refreshed twenty-year vision for South Tyneside. There's core ambitions for all people to be financially secure, healthy and well and part of strong communities at the target support to make things fairer. This scheme could actually be causing more harm than good and should be reconsidered.
Thank you, councillor Herbert. Councillor Bell, did you want to come back to that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The thirty percent charge affects around only eight percent of our residents, our council taxpayers. However, the council will continue to offer top-up relief of the one hundred pound in twenty-three, twenty-four. We are still waiting for information from the government, who are actually increasing a further twenty-five pound to that relief. Obviously, that hundred pound is for working age households in receipt of LCTS and only Durham in the region is offering something similar. This will reduce the bill of that group and those due to pay a fifteen percent charge, namely households on low income, where an individual is in receipt of a disability benefit- where an individual is in receipt of a disability benefit or there is a child under five. That will affect quite a few of our residents. By between twenty and seventy percent will be the reduction, depending upon individual circumstances. Residents of pensionable age continue to be assessed under the terms of the old National Council Tax Benefit Scheme. So this council has actually taken forward the council tax relief scheme and has continued it without government funding. And we will continue to do that in twenty-three, twenty-four. I understand what councillor Herbert is saying and we will continue to look at all of our strategies as they are all interlinked and will move forward. But the council tax scheme for twenty-three, twenty-four will protect a lot, nearly seventy percent of our residents will be able to claim something under this scheme. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Is the report agreed and is the council tax reduction scheme agreed and adopted? All those in favour? Thank you. We now move on to item six on this evening's agenda. It's to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs on the Animal Protection Charter. I will ask councillor Joan Atkinson, Deputy Leader and Lead Member for Culture, Leisure and Visitor Economy to formally move the report. Councillor Atkinson?
Thank you. Thank you, madam mayor. I'm extremely proud to bring the animal charter forward and I look forward for endorsement of it by full council tonight. In setting out an animal protection charter like this, the first in the region and one which others nationally are already looking to and learning from. As an organisation, we are nailing our colours to the mast and making a clear pledge to uphold animal welfare and to protect wildlife. The charter brings together a number of different kinds of commitments. As a local authority, South Tyneside Council has a great many statutory obligations in relation to animals. From our licensing of animal businesses to our planning work to ensure the needs of wildlife are considered as part of land development. It is crucial that in undertaking this important work, we observe best practice and hold ourselves to high standards. And with this charter, we are clearly committing to do that. Perhaps just as importantly, as a council, we also have a significant number of opportunities to educate and influence the residents and businesses of the borough. As set out in this charter, we are committed to working with local people to help raise awareness of how they can minimise harm to animals or wildlife in everything from angling practices and pet ownership to avoiding littering, to thinking about how best to feed wildlife. Finally, we also have opportunities to look at our own internal processes and at the way we use our own land and resources to make sure we are leading by example. This includes more strongly communicating existing stances around opposing activities which are harmful to animals on council-owned land. It also includes considering how we can go further in everything from promoting the benefits of plant-based diets to ensuring we have the right processes in place to protect animals used for entertainment and educational purposes. It is of course important to be clear that there are limitations to what the council can do in all of these areas. Local authorities are bound by national legislation and cannot prohibit harmful yet legal activities such as the use of snares on private land. Similarly, it's important that we acknowledge that the council's roles and resources are necessarily distinct from those of partners such as police, particularly when it comes to activities such as the investigation of wildlife crime. However, there is still a lot we can do as a council to influence and lead and educate. And with this charter, we are setting out our intentions to do what we can. In developing this charter, we've taken care to engage, listen and learn from a wide range of stakeholders. We've looked at charters and commitments from elsewhere in the country. We've taken into account the perspectives and insights of officers from a wide range of services across the council, from environmental protection, licensing, planning, asset management, procurement, catering and communications and our countryside and carbon reduction teams. From very early on in this project, we've benefited greatly from the input of representatives of animal protection organisation, North East Animal Rights, to whom we are extremely grateful for their joint work with the council. It's important to be clear too, that this charter is neither the beginning nor the end of this important work. Over the years as an organisation, we've already made a number of important motions in relation to animal welfare, which have been reinforced in this charter. Similarly, individual portfolio holders and services have ensured continual improvements in the area of animal protection as they've undertaken their duties and have taken important steps to address specific issues as they have arisen, including work in the last year to aid the public in respecting our protected species of herringgulls, pioneering work on the motion for the ocean, our motion on minimising the use of animals as prizes and work to support developers with advice on wildlife-friendly options. This charter seeks to begin to bring together and build on these strong foundations. It also provides us with a clear direction of travel and a framework for holding ourselves to account. Going forward, the delivery of the charter will be overseen by an elected member and officer cross-service working group who will drive forward an underpinning action plan. With time, this will likely identify further opportunities to strengthen our ways of working in this area. So I hope colleagues will join me in endorsing the South Tyneside Animal Protection Charter and in celebrating the cross-service work to date that is informed and culminated in this important set of commitments. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Atkinson. Is the motion seconded?
I'll second the motion.
Councillor Lamont, can't hear you. Thank you very much councillor Lamont. Does any member wish to speak or is there any questions? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, madam mayor. Really pleased to see this coming to Borough Council tonight and would like to extend huge thanks to elected members, council staff and campaigning groups involved in putting all of this together and the valuable work that's gone into this. I'd also like to celebrate the previous progress that's been made by council, as referred to the use of live animals in council events, mentions in the report about balloon releases and offering animals as prizes. And that's all fantastic and it's great to see that being extended now. The first page of the charter itself, as opposed to the report, mentions the role that South Tyneside Council has in influencing and engaging with the wider community. And I'm pleased to see the important advocacy role that we can play acknowledged here. Some previous Green Group amendments around issues affecting wildlife and animals like single-use plastics and animals as prizes at non-council events and sites have been argued against partly on the grounds that the council isn't responsible for what private businesses and individuals do. So it's very encouraging to see that we're now setting a clear precedent that the council can and should play that engagement and influencing role beyond its own action. And while I applaud the content of the charter in its current form, I'd also hope that as time goes on, we might have clearer commitments to minimising tree felling and other habitat removal, taking a closer look at the impact of fireworks and also using alternatives to glyphosate-based weed killers which threaten both animal and human health. Obviously bearing in mind the limitations of scope that councillor Atkinson mentioned. But I'm really happy to support the charter. I hope everybody else here tonight feels the same and look forward to seeing the continued development of this work. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Francis. Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, madam mayor. Yeah, great charter and I agree with it. Whilst we're on charters, could I ask, have we got a list of charters that the council's got and I could have a copy of it please? And have we got a charter for the homeless, those with drug and alcohol abuse problems?
Councillor Robertson, can I just stop you there? If you need a list of the charters, go through Democratic Services, they will be able to supply you with any list of charters you require. We are specifically dealing with one item on this agenda tonight and that's the animal charter. So we don't want to bring other charters into it.
I'm asking on behalf of a member of the public.
Yes, well, I'm telling you where to go to get the information councillor.
It's a point having full council if they've got to go to the democratic services.
But it's got to be councillor, it's got to be.
Can you tell them to shut up while I'm talking because you tell us to shut up?
Excuse me, can we have silence in the chamber please?
Right, thank you.
And also councillor, there's no need to be rude. I'm trying to explain to you the protocol for any councillor that is approached by the public to gain information goes through Democratic Services. It doesn't come to full council. The items on the agenda tonight is the animal charter, which is what we are now discussing. So if you require any further information, I suggest you get in contact on behalf of your residents to Democratic Services and they will be able to support you in that matter.
It'll be in the minutes now, so I expect them to send them those later, mayor. Thank you.
Well, they'll send them when you request them. Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, madam mayor. And thank you for the report councillor Atkinson. I like to think I'm a big animal lover and of course I'm very happy to see anything that improves animal welfare being discussed. Of course, I see this chart, I've been reported as worked in cross-service as opposed to cross-party. So this is the first I've heard or seen of this report presented today. Of course, I fully understand councillor Atkinson's being very clear and open that this report isn't anything that this report isn't anything new and is more a direction of travel. But all the same, I applaud this and fully support that. And I would be one of the first to raise my hand to be a member of the proposed Animal Protection Working Group. Although from the declarations of interest, I see that's already formed also as a cross-party. But in a purely constructive manner, as we are discussing our animal rights charter, I'd like to mention some of the points that don't seem to be addressed currently, keeping in mind that councillor Atkinson states this charter will develop under the proposed Animal Protection Working Group. I would like to have seen a mention of potential for the return of dog wardens. Currently, we have none. We need them, residents want them and they should be central to any animal protection charter. I would also like to have seen detail on the council, this has been mentioned already by councillor Francis, detail on the council's position with fireworks. Things are moving on with fireworks, they're so debilitating to animals. The use of low-dezibel fireworks should be something I think would warrant inclusion in this report. I'd like to have seen detail on the council's position with pesticides, as also mentioned by councillor Francis. So debilitating to animals and we've seen so many concerns raised in this area. This would have been an opportunity to highlight and clarify the position on pesticides. I'd like to have seen detail on the council position with littering, so debilitating again to animals. And we could have included something on enforcement on littering. This would have a significant effect as opposed to only mentioning educating the public on the risks. Also a detail on the council position with horses, particularly long-term tethering of horses, which I've seen several times in the borough. This needs addressing. And also details of the council position on pets in council accommodation. Residents need to be consulted and information clearly available on what's acceptable as opposed to a vague mention of the importance of household space. But, as I said, fully appreciate that this charter is currently only a direction of travel. And on that basis, I fully support this today. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Atkinson, do you wish to come back to that?
Thank you. I mean, sorry, was there somebody else? No, no, it's you. Right, sorry. Yes, thank you for those who, you know, have acknowledged the work that's gone into this. It is a cross-service and has taken actually since April of last year from the various services to come together. It's only involved two elected members for two of those most recent meetings, just to tie up. Very happy for people who want to come forward to it as a cross-party working group. But, you know, the intention is a quarterly, I believe, a quarterly working group just to look at any national issues which arise and also to see if we can improve on, you know, what practices we do and what we can learn from elsewhere and take forward suggestions and maybe put more detail. You know, I think councillor Thompson's given us something there. I mean, this charter would have been, I don't know how many hundred pages along if we were telling people how to walk their dogs and how many dog wardens were needed, et cetera. It's all about our commitment to outlining our responsibilities as a council, encouraging and educating others within scope that we can. But also, you know, to fly the flag, to say that we are, you know, we are an animal friendly and we want to continue to build on the reputation we have. We have worked extensively with North East Animal Rights, it's a very compassionate organisation locally. The local representative here has worked very closely with us and I believe she's very happy with the content of this charter. Other than that, I'd welcome full endorsement. I don't know if councillor Lamont, who I know has a particular interest in this, is a seconder, wants to speak. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Foster. You wanted to speak first before I bring councillor Lamont in as a seconder.
Thank you, madam mayor. An excellent report by councillor Atkinson. And as I say, I will be supporting the charter. However, I'd like to highlight the following, and I quote, "As a coastal borough that has made an ocean recovery declaration in January twenty-two and plays a lead role nationally in representing the rest of coastal areas, the council also recognises its role in protecting, conserving coastal wildlife and associated habitats." I further quote in paragraph one seven, "In line with its ocean recovery declaration in January twenty-two, the council is committed to considering the ocean when making decisions and ensuring that economic opportunities associated with the sea are developed in a sustainable way." "And further, in an email this week to all members, the council has called for more government intervention to help improve water quality in coastal communities like South Tyneside. These are all positive intentions, but without action, these words may well be hollow. I welcome asking the government to intervene. This council can intervene on certain issues." Eight hundred and twenty thousand tonnes of untreated sewage entered the North Sea at Whitburn Pumping Station in twenty twenty-one. Last November, Sunderland Council unanimously passed a motion highlighting the problem along our adjoining coastline. And I will say that all opposition members in this chamber support this issue under the attention into being discussed in the chamber. "In my ward, two hundred plus houses proposed on clean and industrial estate will add sewage into the already overloaded part of this system. The council have asked the government to intervene on ensuring water quality. I am asking this council to intervene and consider stopping development until this system is fixed." To honour the words in the report, in the charter, and I quote, "The council is committed to considering the ocean when making decisions." Eight hundred and twenty thousand tonnes of sewage going into the sea in one year at Whitburn. Don't need words to describe the effect that will be having on the ocean and the creatures that live in the ocean. We need to address this problem here and now, and if we are to be serious about honouring this charter. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Foster. Councillor Lamont, as a seconder, did you want to speak again? Okay, thank you. Does the councillor? I'm sorry councillor Gibson, I didn't see you. Do you want to speak?
Can I just reply to the councillor regarding about the ocean? We have written to the environment minister, as you know, we are calling for action. As you mentioned, you know, the water companies are discharging this border. You mentioned about ocean recovery, motion for the ocean. South Tyneside is very proactive locally and nationally and will have declared an ocean recovery. We have asked the minister to intervene. We've asked the minister to come back with some answers. We've also asked the water companies to come back with some answers. We've got information regarding that twenty-five-year plan. The twenty-five-year plan doesn't come into twenty twenty-five. We want action now. And South Tyneside Council, myself and the leader, has written to the environment minister, asking for this action to help. But also, we've taken it up nationally with DEFRA and the Environmental Agency and we will continue to do that. But we need the water boards to come on board because the water boards are vandalising on our ocean and that is what they're actually doing. And that is what they're actually doing. And we are proud in South Tyneside. We had the best ocean. We've got the best ocean around. If you look, the Times report last year. Beach of the year, absolutely fantastic. We don't want to vandalise in South Tyneside. We want people to come here. We want a town that we're proud of. So yes, we are taking action and we are being heard and we'll continue to do that. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gibson. Councillor Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to come back to councillor Gibson there. As he said, he mentioned how clean the beaches were. And it's fantastic the beaches are green, but there's that much waste going into the water. And we're letting the kids go into the water. What sort of diseases are them kids getting in the water? Surely they've got to be putting some up there to be careful in this water? Because letting the kids go in and adults going swimming, I know councillor Francis goes in swimming. What sort of diseases is he picking up and taking away? So surely God's stomach's got to be put in for the water straight away. And where's the goldfish gone? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
The goldfish are still swimming up the tide councillor Roberts.
Can I just respond to the councillor? We are asking for more tests, water quality tests to be done, but more quality, perfect test, which is we're not testing for only certain things at the moment. We need to test for other things. As you've got at Marston, you've got birds droppings, feces going in. So there's other options. We need to test more regularly. That is one of the problems. If we've done more testing, we could take action more. And that is one of the things we've actually called for.
Thank you. I'm sorry councillor Roberts. Thank you councillor Robertson. Did you want to say something?
Thank you. I heard what councillor Gibson just said and what Ian's just said. And down the lines of where's our director of public health with all this human waste going in there? It's already passed on the book to the water company. We've got a director of public health. Why is he not involved? And why aren't we not getting reports about this human waste? Thank you.
Okay, I think we've had enough debate on the subject and I'm sure if you wrote to our director of public health, we'll be able to give you the answers that you require, as will the lead member be able to give you answers also. You're the one requesting it councillor. Councillor, please. Does the council agree to endorse the charter and the range of commitments within it? The report is agreed. Thank you colleagues. We now move on to item seven on this evening's agenda. The next item of business is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs on the Election Act 2022, the interim review of portable polling places. I will ask councillor Bell, Lead Member for Governance, Finance and Corporate Affairs, to formally move the report. Councillor Bell.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report refers to the Elections Act 2022 and its introduction of a number of changes which affect the accessibility, equipment resources and staffing in polling places and which will be enforced at the forthcoming elections in May later this year. Due to the need for more space within polling places to check voter ID and to ensure South Tyneside voters with disabilities are able to vote independently, a review has been undertaken with a view to reducing the number of small portable polling stations being used. This review reduces the number of portable stations used in the borough from twenty-three to six. Borough council has asked today to consider and agree the recommendations of the Constitution Committee as set out in appendix one of the report and authorise the corporate lead of legal and governance to publish the decision of the council with reasons, including all prescribed information in line with the requirements of the Electoral Administration Act of 2006. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bell. Is that seconded? Councillor Best?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to second that. Oh, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak to the report? Councillor Francis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Fully appreciate, given the changes that have come in with the Election Act 22, the need for adequate space to deal with those new requirements. And presumably there's also a financial cost to using the temporary polling stations as well. But that said, some of the changes which also involve a change of location, inevitably that will make voting more accessible for some people and maybe less accessible for others. With regard to paragraph four, which talks about the main changes and the need for voter ID. The Electoral Reform Society say that evidence from around the world shows that forcing voters to bring photographic ID to the polling station just makes it harder for people to vote whilst doing little to increase faith in the integrity of the system. The government estimate that their scheme could cost up to a hundred and eighty million pounds a decade. And we don't need to spend millions to put up barriers to people taking part in our democracy. There are arguments that some groups of people are likely to be disproportionately affected and this has the potential to impact the outcome of elections on both local and national levels. As just one example, the voter ID list gives fewer options to younger people than it does to older people. While we might see the legislation as a form of voter suppression with significant financial costs, I'm relatively satisfied that we're responding to a very imperfect system in an appropriate way with these proposals.
Thank you councillor Francis. Councillor Robertson? Thank you councillor Robertson. Councillor Bell, did you want to come back to that?
Yes, I'm afraid I would have to get back to the councillor on that because it was actually the reports that went through the Constitution Committee. And I know with the schools, there is some problems around being able to access an extra space for voter ID. But I will get the information to councillor Robertson about his area, about those three that is questioned.
Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Peacock?
A matter of clarification, Perth Green CA is
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you councillor Peacock.
It's a matter of clarification. Perth Green CA is not a school.
Okay, thanks. We'll note that. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, the only concern I have with these places being, like new places being put in is I've got a few residents across on the Headworth and Carthage area and they're taking it away from St Joseph's School and taking it to Headworth C A, which we know is a strong Labour hold. My main concern is when people are, when voters are standing, wanting to know which way to vote, will there be no Labour Party members or any party members in there? They bullying them or intimidating them which way to vote? Because we have seen it in the past. We've all seen the video of Labour councillors intimidating and bullying residents in their own home. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Roberts, but it's about the polling stations. It's not about politics. It's about for all political groups. Councillor Huntley?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well taken on board what councillor Robert said. We'd already made a decision at the CA that we won't be in attendance on that day because of that very reason, so that nobody could actually criticise us in any way because of that.
Thank you councillor Huntley. Councillor Kilgore?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a point of information. It's Headworth Field C A, not Headworth. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bell. Did you want to come back to that?
No, Madam Mayor, obviously. There was no questions asked from councillor Roberts. But I will get councillor Robertson the information he requires.
Any other member wish to speak? Councillor Flynn?
Yeah, Chair, where there's more than one polling booth in the same building, can we ensure if someone goes in the wrong room, that directed to the correct room?
Thanks councillor Flynn for that.
Yes, that will happen. There will be staff around and probably extra to what we've had because there are some stations that we have used in the past that have been double stations. They've worked extremely well and we've used that experience and that knowledge to actually take it forward through this report because there are going to be some more where they're going to be double polling stations in one location.
Thanks councillor Bell. Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And if you don't mind, I was previously just going to thank councillor Gibson for all his hard work and dedication to the cause. I've had many conversations with him and I appreciate his determination to solve the problem. However, I didn't stand up to say that. Just I wonder if it can clarify councillor Bell. In our ward, I haven't had the opportunity to speak to my ward colleagues, but our polling stations are quite, are going to be very closely located next to each other. Has there been any sort of guidance given about distances and locations of the stations? Because now certainly in Cleeden, that's the one that's going to be brought in the village is in close proximity, the one that's already there in the Methodist church. And then Bolden, they literally over the road from each other. I just wonder if there was any guidance on locations. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Foster. Councillor Bell?
Obviously that has been taken into consideration, but I will get the information back to the councillor as to why the locations are where they are. And I presume the ones in Bolden, you mean, are East Bolden? Because ours haven't changed at all.
We're not getting very good with the locations.
That's all right. No problem. I will get that to you councillor.
Councillor Kennedy?
Could I just ask, obviously I see the reasoning for voter identification being brought in and it is going to cause a lot of problems for a lot of our residents. And I guess there's going to be residents turning up on the night of polling that are going to be turned away that didn't know anything about this. And I understand it will be widely publicised, but there will be people still fall through the net. What I would ask, is there going to be any consideration, given being that this will be the first time it's happened in view of that, in, you know, letting people vote this time with a view to educating them for the future?
Councillor Bell?
Unfortunately, Madam Mayor, we are directed by government legislation in this and that won't be the case. Can I just make a plea to all of us here in the chamber? That the best way forward, and there's still time to do it, is to get our residents to switch to postal votes. They don't need any actual identification for that. And that is the best way forward. Failing that, residents can apply through our legal department for a certificate whereby they will have their identity checked and they will get a certificate to be able to vote. Therefore, they do not need to take photographic identification to the polls with them. If that is the way they choose to continue to vote, then I would suggest that we try and get as many as we can to get the certificates of identification so they don't need to carry their photo identification to the polls. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bell. Councillor Huntley?
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you for giving me the second opportunity just to put councillor Kennedy's mind at rest. Actually, as I was driving here tonight, for the first time, the Electoral Commission had it on the back of some public transport buses with wording saying, you must bring voter ID with you when you're coming to vote. So they've already started that process out there on public transport.
Thank you councillor Huntley. Councillor Atkinson?
I just thought it might be useful to just share with colleagues some of the considerations that were put forward. Which members of the Constitution Committee did have as evidence as to why these locations were recommended. So obviously, you know, we need accessible places for people to, you know, to be able to get to in a if they're using a wheelchair or, you know, sight impaired, et cetera. So that was clearly above all. Places like schools are not ideal. Sometimes there is very little choice around that because of the location. But there was something about, you know, closing a school to have a, to have a, an election is not always the best thing for the pupils. So where possible, I think officers try to find alternative arrangements near where schools already were. So in the instances that I think councillor Foster highlighted, so in in East Bolden, what you've got in East Bolden is you've now got two polling stations going into the same location, into the scout hut. It was originally in the school some years ago and I actually asked for a different location and that has happened. So the school doesn't need to close and both booths are able to go in the same station. You know, which means that they can be managed well, they're accessible. And also it's about this new identification process. Is there space to do that without anyone seeing other people's documents, et cetera? So I think where possible, the Constitution Committee did look very, very closely at the conditions around each polling station and came to the conclusion that these recommendations should come forward. Thank you.
Thanks for that councillor Atkinson. Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to come back to councillor Bell there, when you're talking about the postal votes, I do think it's a great idea because there is a lot of disabled people trying to get there. But I'm just wondering if she can guarantee that these boxes will not go missing like they did in the last leadership. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Robertson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The question I asked before and councillor Bell obviously said she would try and find out the answer. Now that councillor Atkinson said that they were involved in choosing the polling stations. When she just said that they decided the Constitution Committee, can she give an answer why Lord Blighton was refused or rejected and why Perth Dream was rejected, please?
Councillor Atkinson, do you want to come back to that?
Well, it was the constitution, so maybe councillor Thompson can remember the reason.
Well, I'm sorry, there's a collective amount that's it, I'm concerned. I'm sorry, I think we need to move on councillor. Just, excuse me, can we have silence in the chamber? I wasn't talking to you. Can we have silence in the chamber, please? Thank you. Excuse me, I've just asked for silence. Does council agree the recommendations set out in appendix one and authorise the corporate lead of legal and governance to publish the decisions of the council in line with the requirements of the Electoral Administration Act 2006? Is that agreed? Thank you colleagues. We now move on to item eight on this evening's agenda. This item is to consider a report of the Director of Governance and Corporate Affairs on a freedom of the borough proposal. I will ask councillor Dixon, get the right teeth in. I will ask councillor Dixon, Leader of the Council, to formally move the report. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Colleague, the report sets out the process involved in bestowing this exceptional honour, an honour which has only been awarded to eleven people or organisations since nineteen eighty-one, most recently to Ray Spencer MBE. At a meeting of the Constitution Committee on the twenty seventh of October, twenty twenty-two, it was unanimously agreed that the cross-party nomination be supported and recommended to be an recommendation to be made to Borough Council to commence the process to formally recognise and honour Sheila Graber by conveying upon her the highest honour, freedom of the borough of South Tyneside. The first step in the process is for the Borough Council to consider the recommendation from the Constitution Committee. And if Borough Council agrees, Miss Graber to be a suitable and worthy candidate, Borough Council must agree to arrange a specially convened extraordinary meeting of Borough Council to formally consider the matter and arrange an appropriate ceremony to celebrate the conferral, should it be agreed by Borough Council at an extraordinary meeting. The recommendations, Madam Mayor, are set out in paragraph twenty-six of the report and I would encourage Borough Council to proceed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you councillor Peacock and councillor Robertson. Are there any questions or does any member wish to speak? Sorry councillor Francis, I didn't see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, really, really pleased to see this come to Borough Council and have acknowledged that this is a cross-party proposal. And I maybe should have declared an interest at the beginning of the meeting because I'm a proud owner of a Sheila Graber original painting of Little Haven. of a Sheila Graber original painting of Little Haven Beach, which has pride of place in our front room. But yeah, I can't think of many people more deserving of this accolade than Sheila Graber. So absolutely delighted to see this come to full council. The only thing I would say, as I've mentioned, with regard to a previous freedom of the borough, it's right that these things have a sense of occasion and that there's, you know, you wouldn't want to do this in a way that didn't reflect the, the, you know, the level of celebration that we want to give to somebody like this. But at the same time, I'm aware that there are, there are costs involved in putting on the commemorative events. And therefore, I would urge again that, as I requested previously, if there's any way that a mechanism can be put in place so that councillors wishing to attend and express their support for these people can pay their own costs, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you councillor Francis. councillor Dixon, did you want to come back to that?
No, thank you very much councillor Francis for supporting the nomination and councillor Robertson and councillor Pecor. Oh, the microphone's not on. Can you hear me okay? Oh, it's because the mayor's on.
Oh, no, no. Okay, thank you very much colleagues.
Thank you, madam mayor. And just to echo councillor Francis's sentiments, for Sheila Graber, very well deserving. And thank you very much for presenting, councillor Dixon.
Thank you councillor Robertson.
Thank you very much, madam mayor. Yes, excellent idea and excellent award. And I do think the council should be considered on the blue plaque as well for the same lady. And when it comes to the costs, you know, if you think the amount the council has, if we all paid a hundred pound each, when these awards get done, that's nearly covering the cost. So I think each elected member, a hundred pound each, whenever we're doing one of these awards, is a great idea. Thank you.
Thanks councillor, that will be noted. Does any other member wish to speak? No? Does council agree the report in support of the freedom of the borough proposal for Ms Sheila Graber and resolve to hold an extraordinary meeting of the borough council in the summer? Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you colleagues. We now move on to item nine. Item nine is to consider any questions. No questions have been received under this item. We now move on to item ten. The next item of business is to deal with petitions received under council procedure rule nine. No items have been received, so there's no petitions. And there was no petitions presented to the meeting of the borough council held in October 2022. Therefore, no updates of reports from the appropriate bodies. We now move on to item eleven. The next item of business is to receive motions under procedure rule ten. Two motions are to be considered under this rule today. I will ask the proposer of each motion to move the motion, and he or she may speak for up to five minutes. I will then ask the seconder to speak, and the seconder may speak for up to three minutes or reserve the right to speak later in the debate. The motion will be open to debate by members who may each speak up to three minutes and move amendments. Any amendments must be relevant to the motion. Only one amendment will be moved and discussed at any one time. If the motion is not carried, other amendments to the original motion may be moved. If an amendment is carried, the motion as amended takes the place of the original motion and becomes the substantive motion, of which any further amendments are moved. Motion one. Motion one has been submitted by councillors Kennedy, Milburn, Roberts, Thompson, Foster, Brennan and Robertson. Councillor Kennedy, please present the motion to full council. Thank you.
Thank you, madam mayor. Can I just start by welcoming the women of the Wasby to the, tonight's council meeting? Unfortunately, due to circumstances, we weren't able to greet them at the door. I hope everybody in this chamber recognises the injustice to women caused by an increase to the state pension age from sixty to sixty-six by successive changes to pensions act in nineteen ninety-five and two thousand and eleven. These changes were not properly communicated to three point eight million women that were born in the nineteen fifties until two thousand and twelve. Many women only had one year's notice of a six-year increase in their anticipated retirement age. Eleven thousand of the affected women are in our own authority area, in a total of sixty-five thousand in the North East. The All Party Parliamentary Group on State Pension Inequality for Women has concluded that the impact of the Department of Work and Pensions maladministration on nineteen fifties-born women has been as devastating as it is widespread. Also, the parliamentary and health service ombudsman has found that the Department for Work and Pensions was guilty of maladministration in its handling of the state pension age increase for women born in the nineteen fifties. Research commissioned by the campaign group Wasby has found that more than two hundred and twenty thousand nineteen fifties-born women will have died waiting for justice since the Wasby campaign began in two thousand and fifteen. Despite the ombudsman's findings of maladministration and the rapid death rate of those affected, government is choosing to wait for further reports before taking any action. I hope everyone in this chamber today can support the conclusion of the All Party Parliamentary Group on State Pension Inequality, that women born in the nineteen fifties have suffered a gross injustice affecting their emotional, physical and mental circumstances in addition to causing financial hardship. I hope we can, as a council, all support this motion today and resolve to ask the leader of the council to write to our local members of parliament and to the secretary of state for work and pensions to outline the effects of the injustice to nineteen fifties women on the communities in South Tyneside and to seek their support for an immediate compensation package. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. is that seconded? Thank you councillor Foster. Does any member wish to speak? Because the motion is now open to debate. councillor Purvis?
Thank you, madam mayor. By an accident of birth, I am not one of the Wasby women. I got my state pension aged sixty, but I do recognise an injustice, as does this council. We were among the first to offer our support to the campaign and have continued to do so. Therefore, I'm content to give support to this motion. It's been a long road, but it has now been accepted by the ombudsman that there has been maladministration. In my working life, I managed a complaints department dealing with inquiries from women regarding changes to pension age and the ability to pay arrears of contributions in order to qualify for a pension. They were given correct advice by my department, but unfortunately, this wasn't a common factor, and there were other areas that they contacted who gave them no advice or the wrong advice, and this isn't right. Hence the findings by the ombudsman. Where maladministration has occurred, the remedy is to, as far as possible, return the person to the position they would have been in if it hadn't happened. But I would just issue a word of caution. There's a sliding scale of payments. Some will have suffered measurable financial loss, as in moving from a well-paid full-time job to a part-time job in preparation for a retirement that did not happen. Others have just suffered disappointment. The payments set by the ombudsman will reflect this. So I'm pleased that this motion sets out extra payments which cover the substantial loss and upset that the women have suffered. So on this cautionary note, I fully support the motion.
Thank you councillor Purvis. Does any other member wish to speak? councillor Brennan?
Thank you, madam mayor. In nineteen ninety-five, the government changed the pension age for women from sixty to sixty-five. While some communication happened, it's fair to say this was inadequate, leaving many women unaware that their retirement age had changed. The problem was compounded again in two thousand and eleven, when the pension age changed again. Fast forward to today, and it's plain to see the effect this has had on nineteen fifties women who fell short of getting their pensions and who had planned for early retirement. As part of my campaign to become a councillor, I talked to many women who had been affected and who were struggling because of not being informed properly. I promised them I would support the Wasby movement, and tonight I will uphold my promise by supporting this motion. I hope everyone will also lend their support in voting for, voting for tonight, so we can send a united message in trying to get the help and compensation that these women need. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Brennan. councillor Kilgair?
Thank you, madam mayor. I'm delighted to see so many of our Wasby women here tonight, and I too welcome them. Councillor Lisk brought this to council via councillor Hetherington on the eighth of September two thousand and sixteen by way of emotion. This remains on YouTube for all to see, and it's something that we continue to support. This urged government to put in place compensation for the women affected by these changes. The chief executive was instructed to write to the secretary of state for work and pensions and did so on the eleventh of October two thousand and sixteen. A response was received on the third of November two thousand and sixteen. At a Jarro constituency event on the first of October two thousand and sixteen, we were privileged, as I was one of them, to spend some time with a number of our Wasby women. Kate Osborne MP for Jarro reassures me of her unstinting support and that she has a roundtable meeting regarding the Wasby women's situation next week. And I look forward to receiving the final findings and congratulate all Wasby women. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kilgair. councillor Robertson?
Thank you, madam mayor. So it doesn't matter, you know, who's brought it to the chamber. The independent councillors have brought it. Every councillor in here should back it.
Councillor, that's up for discussion. We're discussing the motion.
Right, I'm discussing it. I am discussing it. Right, the people are here and they want to see their representatives. Well, can it just be told to silence? They've had to see what they want.
Councillor, I am not silencing you. I am asking you to keep to the debate, not throw accusations across the chamber about who brought it and who didn't bring it.
Exactly.
We're well aware, excuse me, we're well aware of who brought the motion to the chamber tonight, because I did read out the names. Okay, so everybody in here, including the public, are well, are well aware of that.
I get that, I get that. Thank you. And what I'm saying is, it's no good paying lip service. The women have suffered for long enough. There's two thousand and sixteen being mentioned. We're now in twenty twenty-three, seven year later. We need to hit it hard and stay together, not just pay them one token gesture. We've got to hit it hard and continue hitting them hard. And at the next general election, if nothing's happened, these people need to give a commitment. If their government gets in, we need to fight it, not leave them seven year, and they're all with and away more and more. It's no good lip service. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Robertson for that. councillor Carter?
Thank you, madam mayor. I am a Wasby woman, and, and I don't get my state pension for another couple of years. Yes, and I feel very aggrieved that I'm in this position, just because of the year I was born in. I haven't received any letter notifying me of the change in pension age, and I certainly haven't had anything from the government. This is affecting hundreds of thousands of women who are suffering financial hardship and so not being able to replan for their retirement. Some women can't believe their retirement age has increased by four, five or even six years, and they didn't even know about it. I think it's a disgrace that nineteen fifties women, of one, one of which I am, would have been singled out for unfair and unequal treatment because of the way the increases to our state pension age have been brought in. Many women until the nineteen nineties weren't allowed to join company pension schemes and therefore have no other source of income, with many being carers or in poor health themselves. Securing work is proving impossible, and zero hour contracts or jobseeker's allowance is the only alternative for many. The government has treated Wasby women appallingly, and I totally support the campaign and this motion. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Carter. councillor Thompson?
Thank you, madam mayor. It's been mentioned already, how the Wasby women have been let down terribly by successive governments. This was confirmed, as mentioned earlier, by the office of the parliamentary ombudsman, who found maladministration in the Labour government between two thousand and four and two thousand and seven. Also, strong criticism being targeted at Peter Lilly under the major administration, the then social security secretary in the mid nineties, by ignored warnings by civil servants of the need to inform these women. It's frightening when you look at the estimate for putting this situation right. I've seen the number fifty-eight billion banded around. And I could go on about sliding scales, which was mentioned earlier, but I think today, I don't think we should be talking about the financial consequences, but simply agreeing as a council, we recognise the injustice, injustice and do what we can as a council in resolving to let that recognition of injustice be heard clearly again by government. I really hope we can all support this motion today. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Thompson. councillor Bell?
Thank you, madam mayor. And like councillor Carter, I am a person who is of an age where this campaign directly affects me. I wish to thank the women involved for bringing this motion to the notice and the attention of councillors and this council, and those of neighbouring councils as well this week. The injustice to women born in the nineteen fifties must be addressed and a solution found quickly. We as a council have fully supported the campaign over the years, and I know that we will continue to do so. When I started work at sixteen, I was fully under the impression that my state pension would be paid at age sixty. I'm still not there yet and still have, like councillor Carter, a couple of years to go to, to get there. And that was never, ever the intention and was not what was told to me when I started work. And unfortunately, it looks as though we could be looking for an increase in the age at which the pension is paid. So we need to get something sorted now. I hope that everyone in this chamber will endorse this motion and that those of our neighbouring authorities who have been presented with the same motion will do exactly the same as I hope we do here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bell. councillor Roberts?
Thank you, madam mayor. I think it's great here now that we're all sticking together. There's no brownie points to be made on this whatsoever. It's just one thing that these ladies, including the councillors, and all these ladies who are here, get what they deserve. And we should all stand together and fight for this one hundred percent. Thank you, madam mayor.
councillor Roberts? councillor Kennedy, you have a right to reply because you presented the motion. Sorry councillor Foster wanted to speak. I do beg your pardon, I didn't see your hand councillor Foster.
Thank you, madam mayor. Can I just say, of eighteen months of being a councillor, tonight's been a breath of fresh air. We've put all the differences to one side and come together to agree on such a worthy cause and fight. I accept what councillor Kilgair said, that for many years, the Labour group have fought for these ladies as well. On this occasion, it was the alliance of which I brought this motion. It's an absolute privilege to second it tonight. I see the role of a councillor to be a vehicle, a voice to raise residents' concerns and complaints. So who am I, and I don't think I have to say this, who is anybody in here to stop this motion going forward tonight? The Wasby campaign is genuine evidence, and these ladies have suffered, in my opinion, a real injustice. As a council, we should be doing everything to let their voice be heard. I ask everyone to put their personal differences to one side, support this motion in support of these ladies, and let these ladies have their voice. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Foster. councillor Kennedy, you have a right to reply as the proposer. Do you wish to reply?
I will. I'd just like to reiterate what councillor Foster's just said. And I think it's fantastic that it sounds like we're all on the same page here. And I look forward to seeing the result of this motion and hopefully we can go forward and support it. And it is very much so a breath of fresh air. Thank you, madam mayor.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. is the motion agreed? If you've got, if, okay, it's been agreed councillor. Excuse me councillor, just one moment. I'm taking some legal advice here. I don't think there's anybody against it, but I'm just taking some legal advice. Right. What I'm being told is councillor- What I'm being told is, councillor, it was already agreed prior to raising that, but it was unanimous... I can't say it. Put the right teeth in. Unanimously agreed by whole council that the motion will go forward. Tonight? Everybody's... Excuse me, excuse me. We will have no jeering across this chamber. Do I make myself clear? Everybody agreed tonight. It was unanimously agreed tonight. Everybody said yes. Right. The motion is agreed. Congratulations. Thank you, everyone. We now move on to motion two. Motion two has been submitted by councillors Best, Heatherington, Strike, Huntley and Bell. Councillor Best, please present the motion to full council.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm really delighted to bring this motion because I feel it's so important, as you'll gather from the wording of it. The words fire and rehire in this instance are referring to a hostile employment practice of dismissal and re-engagement, which denies the opportunity for the employees to actually engage with the employers when they propose terms and conditions which are different to their existing contracts. Often, when this practice is used, it's with poorer terms and conditions right across the board, such as not just wages, which I think people often think it's just wages. It can involve less holiday pay, lower pensions, even things like car allowances, death and service benefits, that kind of thing. The practice itself isn't currently illegal. And I did recently attend a meeting towards the back end of last year where Barry Gardner MP came to tell us the story of the bill that he'd taken to Parliament to try and outlaw, is the term that was used, this practice. He explained, and he showed us a very moving film that had been made. He travelled the country trying to highlight and raise awareness of this problem, which seems to be, you know, endemic in the current economic climate. It's a strong and well-supported parliamentary bill. The government themselves, government ministers, stated that they felt that the practice was unacceptable. Very high-profile politicians commented on that. In terms of the impact that it has on people's lives, there are people who've lost between, you know, £10,000, £15,000 in terms of financial benefits. They've lost that as a result of this practice and has a massive impact on people's wellbeing, livelihood, mental health and all of those aspects. Companies that have been involved in this have been in the news. We've all heard of the P and O aspects that happened back end of last year. British Gas, Clarks, really very big household names, Argos, Tesco and suchlike. I came away from that meeting feeling very moved, and I know that there was another elected member there who felt the same, one of the signatories of the motion tonight, and I wondered what we could do to highlight this. And I did speak to Barry about what I hoped to do, which was to bring this motion here this evening. It might seem obvious that a workforce who experiences this is demoralised, undervalued and is less productive, less respected. And it seems quite straightforward to me that that causes retention issues and, you know, doesn't harness the best of the workforce potential. But it doesn't seem to have deterred companies from using this as a practice to hold their workers to ransom, almost as an intimidatory tactic to threaten them with the existence of their jobs. I think in this time of economic crisis, we, at a very local level, have a responsibility to be vigilant about this and to look out for, you know, any unscrupulous or opportunistic businesses who might see this tactic as an opportunity to get more for less from the workforce. If the practice did gain traction, certainly at a local level from our perspective, it could actually drive terms, conditions and employment prospects down. And I think that's the last thing we need in the current difficult times that we're living in. At the present time, where it sits is that the government intends to bring forward a code of practice, which isn't, it doesn't give a statutory duty to employers. It would retain hire and fire as a last resort, but it doesn't implement the necessary legislation to prevent it. Now, I'm certain, I've lived here all of my life, that most employers in South Tyneside are very decent and they do value and honour their workforces, and they wouldn't seek to exploit their workforces in this way. But I think as the economic situation worsens and people's cost of living pressures increase, you know, that spectre, even the chance of it happening, is a real, real threat to people who might be terrified of becoming unemployed. And I think if we as community leaders can commit to do all we can to remain vigilant, to set the example and to do what I'm asking tonight, which is to ensure that we continue as a council to say no to firing and rehiring, that we continue to lead by example via our own employment practices and stand together, being vigilant, encouraging our contractors, partnership organisations, local businesses to resist the use of this practice, so that we can seek employment, security and stability for our communities. If we can also signpost, and, you know, we come across people on a daily basis who are coming to us for help of all different kinds, so signpost any residents who believe they may be at risk of being fired and rehired to the relevant local advice services as quickly as possible. And if we can express our support, because where the bill sits at the moment, it's currently gone to the House of Lords. It's been taken back because the government actually stopped it from progressing. And where it would go if the Lords progresses, it's currently in progress and it's passage through the House, it would go back to the House of Commons with Barry Gardner. And if we can support that tonight and agree that it's something that we need to be vigilant about, we could contact Barry Gardner through the leader of the council to confirm our support for the actual concept of the bill and its further progress as needed. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Best. Is that seconded? Councillor Huntley, do you wish to speak?
I reserve the right to speak at the end of the debate. Thank you.
Thank you. The motion is now open to debate by members. Do any members wish to ask questions, speak or move an amendment to the debate? Councillor Robertson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Of course, I back it, and, you know, it's a great idea and it's horrendous what's going on. But it is a bit hypocritical of the council when independent councillors for the past three years since we were voted in, since 2019, have had repeated contact from council staff in their refuse and waste department, and they're suffering the hostile employment atmosphere to the point where they're either getting finished or they're leaving and they're being replaced by agency. At times, them lads have come back as agency themselves. So that is the equivalent of fire and rehire. If you're sicking them enough, they'll go or they'll crack up. So it is a bit hypocritical. It's great on paper, and I back it 100%, but we need to be looking in-house as well, because this council, the way it's tread, its waste and refuse staff is an absolute disgrace for the last three years. Thank you.
Councillor Best, do you wish to come back to that?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The bill as it stands, which is what we're asking people to get behind tonight and the concept of it, actually covers both people being fired and rehired by the same company, but also covers people who would be rehired from other, you know, if people originally lose their jobs, it covers the practice of rehiring people from other areas and other organisations as well. And certainly, you know, if anyone is in that position and has been treated badly by our council, I would expect them to challenge that and to be treated appropriately and correctly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thompson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This motion is one that at first glance seems very easy to support. It's obvious, protect workers' rights against bad employers. But it isn't that simple. In fact, it's very complicated. Before I start, though, it has to be said, the shocking omission of the list of offenders. One of the worst cases of fire and rehire in recent times seems to have been overlooked by the person writing this motion, and that was the Labour-run Council of Tower Hamlets, who, just over a year ago, fired 4,000 employees and rehired them on worse terms. That Labour aren't mentioning this today is interesting. But back to the motion and the bill. I'm sure we all asked ourselves, do we need more protection for workers in respect of fire and rehire? Absolutely. Should I support this bill? Well, that's where it gets complicated. What isn't mentioned in this motion today is that the bill is in trouble. Will it resurface? Will it come back to the Commons? We don't know. But even if it does come back, this bill hasn't even been through committee stage yet. This is where the bill would be debated, scrutinised and almost certainly changed in cross-party debates. So we're being asked today to support something that certainly wouldn't look anything like it does now if it was ever written into law. The complexities of writing something like this into law shouldn't be underestimated. To really simplify the problem, we are talking about potentially creating a worse problem than one it is intended to address. For instance, by driving more redundancies or business failures. And when I say a business, please don't think of huge corporate businesses. This bill would create legal criteria for businesses with just 15 employees. Small businesses are fragile, more than at any other time before. If they need to restructure as an option of last resort and sanctioned under AICAS guidelines, sooner this than the company falling and people becoming unemployed. I said earlier, workers needed more protection from fire and rehire. Government have recently strengthened protections with a new statutory code. It's helpful, is more needed, very probably. But this bill, as it's written now, isn't what I could support. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Roberts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, this is a motion that I would agree with 100% because I think workforce do need to be protected. But as councillor Robertson said, I think the council who's brought this motion to the chambers should look at our own back doors, because we have seen, in half a thousand times, and the chief executive knows, and I've spoken to the leader about it, we have one lad who got sacked for doing nothing wrong. And the video is there for him to see, for anybody to see, but yet again, it's brushed into the carpet. And I was on the appeals panel as a driver, and this lad was a driver, and the people that were on that panel didn't even have licences. So why not take somebody that's got the experience of a driver, that can see what's happening, but no, we'll just sack the lad, and this has been going on for over 12 months now, Madam Mayor, and it's a disgrace. So I think this council should be looking at our own backyard and seeing how bad our employees are treated by this council. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Roberts. Councillor Foster?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As the motion states, the majority of South Tyneside employers are decent, honourable and responsible. I would say the majority of all businesses nationwide are the same. It's an interest to have a content, loyal, experienced workforce. The private members' bill appears to be very rigid, with very little flexibility. I believe that any law with no exemptions of flexibility is generally bad law. Whereas small business, for example, has hit problems, and that business has excellent working relationships, and they ask for the workforce to reduce overheads on a temporary basis just to get over the problem, is there an option for that bill, or in this bill, for that to take place? Or is it very much if they reduce the pay, if they fire them and then rehire them, which no business would really want to do, but the only option was to close? Who would benefit from that? It's a loss of a business. So really, if councillor Best could clarify in the bill if there is that option for small businesses who ask the workforce to voluntarily take reduced wage or change in conditions over a short term to get the business over a rough spell. And as stated, most have the right attitude in business, but there will always be rogue companies who will ignore and do what they want to do. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Foster. You've already spoken, councillor Robertson. Does any other councillor wish to speak? You don't have the right to respond to councillor Best. I'm being advised, councillor Robertson. Councillor Best, would you like to respond to what's been asked?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll try and cover as many points as I can that have been raised. I did not make an exhaustive list of people who have been found to have used these practices. So the omission otherwise was not intentional. It was just that there are too many to mention, and it wasn't done intentionally in any particular way. In terms of driving more redundancies or business failures, it's actually the opposite of that. The bill itself actually promotes best practice and it gives a duty to consult and to share information in an open and fair way. So yes, it still has provision for companies that need to restructure. But what it does is, it stops them from doing that and imposing things onto the workforce. It asks them and gives them a statutory duty to consult and to engage with the workforce before they make those changes. So it's actually to stop, you know, the bad practices rather than stop businesses from having to restructure in a responsible way. There is still provision for all of that, and that's widely acknowledged with the bill and with the cross-party support that it's had. So I think, you know, anyone who, as I said before, the other things that have been mentioned about any individual cases, either locally or anywhere else, there are employment laws and procedures that need to be followed. If people have employment disputes individually, then that must be followed, and that's what this is about. It's trying to stop these things from happening. So I hope people can get behind this because it is very well, you know, it's thoroughly researched. It's had a lot of cross-party support. It's just that we need to push it that final mile. And in terms of it being a private members' bill, private members' bills can come back to Parliament, and that's what's happening here. It's been taken to the Lords to try and get it through the Lords to take it back, hopefully, to the House of Commons, which would be the process. And there is an MP that backs that, which is Barry Gardner, so that potentially can happen. So certainly, the intention is not for it to disappear off anywhere. It's too important. And that's why we need to get behind it as a council, as many other councils have done, and show that we support this and that we are leading the way and looking at our practices and encouraging others to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Best. Is the motion agreed? Thank you, colleagues. That concludes the business this evening. Can I thank the members of the public sitting in the Public Gallery for attending?